Roll call of Alderman. Could you please mute your phones unless you're talking?
Alderman Consilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pousa?
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian? Alderman Ovian? Alderman Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Weigant?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
And one last time, Alderman Ovian? No Alderman Ovian.
No Alderman Ovian. At this time, would you please call the department heads?
City Treasurer Hart?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
How's it?
Police Chief Bill Clay? Fire Chief Tom Poor?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitreit?
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Bond?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Cool?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Residential and Commercial Development Anissa McCaskill?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich? City Engineer Michael Veloff?
Here.
Human Resources Manager Emma Qualls?
Here.
Is Lieutenant Colonel Ice Can on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so you're here for Chief Clay tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't talk to him since this morning. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you're able, where you're at, you stand up and join us with the pledge of allegiance.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm muted.
Okay, this time, we have no public hearings this evening. I go to public participation. Is there anyone on the line who would like to address the console for two to three minutes, preferably on a topic of this evening, or at least for sure, city business? Is anybody?
I would.
And who's this?
Jacob Serat.
Okay, your last name again, so the clerk can write it down.
Uh huh, Serat. S as in Sam, U as in umbrella, R as in rabbit, R as in rabbit, A as in apple, T as in Tommy, T as in Tommy.
Okay, thank you. And your comment, sir?
Um, yes, I was just wanting to comment on the speeding down West Main and the police recently putting up a radar detector telling cars off as they're going. That section of West Main moves pretty quickly. Obviously, the road was there before any of us, so we knew what we were getting into, but it's, the traffic is moving, you know, stop it, sorry, faster than the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit, especially since the pandemic. Typically moves faster than Frank Scott and sometimes gets up to about one fifty-nine Illinois street speed. And with as many turnoffs and residential people that live along it, as well as all the walkers and people with kids and strollers and traffic whizzing by at, you know, over forty, sometimes close to fifty miles an hour, it's just gotten a bit out of hand. And so I appreciate the...
Well, we got your message, and it was funny when you had talked to, I believe, Alderman Wiggington, he called me, and I immediately called the chiefs, both the chief and assistant chief, and we got the traffic speed monitor out there. But I told him that I myself, I agree with you. I was out taking a drive through Mount Hope just a week or so ago, and I was amazed at how the cars were flying by. So we are gonna run some radar details, and we're gonna use that monitor to try to re-educate them a little bit, what the speed is. And don't hesitate to call us if you see a certain time of day that it's worse, because they do, they do really fly down that stretch, and we need to get it under control, so nobody gets hurt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, I will close public participation. We have no presentations, recognitions, or appointments this evening, so I'm gonna go to number eight on the agenda and ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of March first, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
Steele, the move.
Steele makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Schaefer will second.
Schaefer seconds. We've got the two ladies there for the motion of second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I will call for a roll call vote to accept and file.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Motion carries. This time, I go to nine A. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and ten cents, and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson, move.
Ferguson, and who was the second? Anthony.
Anthony, move.
Anthony. So we have a motion, we have a motion of second. Do we have any questions about the claims, payroll, or dispersments? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Motion carries. We move to eleven A one. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a bond refunding transaction related to the Carlisle-Greenmount area. Do I hear a motion for this?
Ferguson.
Schaefer will make a motion.
Ferguson and Schaefer will second the motion, and are there questions? This went through both economic development and finance, I believe, or finance for sure, and there was a few extra Aldermen, I believe. Is there any additional questions? Do we need Jamie to explain anything further? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
I have to abstain for compliance reasons.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Ovian said the two.
Oh, Alderman Ovian, you're on?
Yes, I am.
And I say hi.
Thank you.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries. We go to eleven A two. I'd ask for a motion to approve medical Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois Dental and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois and Life Insurance Standard Life carriers effective five-one, two thousand twenty-one, as recommended by staff and our insurance carrier, our insurance broker, I'm sorry. Any questions about that, or do I hear a motion?
Ovian, hi.
Ovian made the motion. Do I hear a...
Schaefer?
We have a second by Schaefer. A motion was by Ovian. Do I hear any questions now on this item before the council? Reference insurance. Hearing no questions, I go for a roll call.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Have seen.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
I'm...
Motion carries. We now go to a request for a motion coming from the finance. Why am I not asking? I thought you said administration. Alderman Consilla, why don't you read these, buddy? 'Cause I was doing too good of a job? Motion to approve, motion to approve the waiving formal bidding procedure and utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance for the purchasing of a Bobcat S four fifty, T four, V two, Skidsteer loader in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eighty dollars and six cents, to include the trade-in of a two thousand eleven Bobcat S one thirty Skidsteer loader for the sanitation department. Do I hear a motion?
Rothweiler moves.
Rothweiler, do I hear a second? And who is this Dittelman? Very good. So we have a motion of a second to approve this Bobcat. Are there any questions about it? Roll call.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, I didn't mean to take your motions. You wanna read eleven A four?
Yes, sir.
You will read eleven A four.
You did such a wonderful job. On behalf of Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director.
Do we hear a second? For a motion or a second? A motion was by Consilla. Do I hear a second?
Schaefer?
Schaefer. We have a motion of a second to approve the budget amendments as recommended by Jamie. Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco? Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Motion carries. We have a number of zoning board of appeals in front of us. Are there, how do you like to do this? Is there a desire to read some of them together, or eliminate some, or all individually?
If we could read them together, great.
Okay, I, yes.
I think we ought to remove our takeout and do separately eleven B six.
So read them all together and come back to eleven B six? That didn't have a recommendation. Okay, is there any objections to that, to that request? Okay, I'll ask the city...
Agreed.
I asked the city clerk to read them except for eleven B six as a group. Okay, please pay attention and mute your phones.
Eleven B one seven, February twenty-one, Benny H. Parr Jr., request for a sign installation permit for area special control for signage at one thirteen and one fifteen East Main Street, zero eight two-two-zero-three-three-three-zero-two-seven, and zero eight two-two-zero-three-three-three-zero-two-eight, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the code one-five-five-point-zero-five-two and one-five-five-point-zero-five-three. Ward two zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven B two zero eight, February twenty-one, Linda Weisenstein, request for a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast Airbnb at six-twenty East Garfield Street, zero eight two-seven-zero-one-three-four-zero-one-five, located in an A one single-family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-zero-nine-four and one-six-two-point-five-one-five. Ward six zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven B three nine, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw, request for a special use permit for a liquor license at one-twenty-four and one-twenty-six East Main Street, zero eight two-two-zero-three-three-eight-zero-four-nine, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight and one-six-two-point-five-one-five. Ward six zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven, eleven B four, ten, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw, request for a special use permit for outdoor dining at one-twenty-four and one-twenty-six East Main Street, zero eight two-two-zero-three-three-eight-zero-four-nine, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight and one-six-two-point-five-one-five. Ward six zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven B five, eleven, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw, request for a sign installation permit for area special control for signage at one-twenty-four and one-twenty-six East Main Street, zero eight two-two-zero-three-three-eight-zero-four-nine, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the code one-five-five-point-zero-five-two and one-five-five-point-zero-five-three. Ward six zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven B seven, thirteen, February twenty-one, City of Belvo zoning code amendment, request for amendment of Title fifteen land usage of the revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Belvo, Illinois, Sections one-six-two-point-two-six-three, special use with the following amendment: A, establishments that hold a Class A, B, C, D, or F liquor license. Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Eleven B eight, fourteen, February twenty-one, Taylor Belvo CDJR Incorporated, request for a special use permit for a used car lot at thirty-seven ninety-five West State Route fifteen, zero eight one-nine-zero-four-zero-zero-two-three, zero eight one-nine-zero-four-zero-zero-two-five, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-five-one-five. Ward eight zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, I'd like to ask if there's a motion to approve eleven B one, B two, B three, B four, B five, B seven, and B eight, and have them approved, motion to consider to approval, and have them ordinances prepared. Do I hear a motion?
Schaefer?
Dittelman is first. Dittelman and Schaefer, I believe. Man, you guys are aggressive. That's good. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second to approve the ones I just read, all but eleven B six. Any questions after you heard them read? Hearing none, roll call.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Ovian?
Hi, I'm sorry, I had a minute.
No worries. Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Weigant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Those motions carry, and they're recommended for ordinance. This time, we go back, and I'll ask the clerk to read eleven B six.
Eleven B six, twelve, February twenty-one, Eric Ramsey, request for a use variance for home occupation for the repair and sale of lawnmowers at five forty Mascula Avenue, zero eight two-seven-zero-two-zero-one-zero-one-two, located in an A one single-family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-five-seven-zero and one-six-two-point-three-nine-four. Ward seven, no recommendation by a vote of three to three.
Do I hear a motion at this time, either way, at this time, for this item?
This is Weigant.
Yeah, Weigant, you're one. No, I'll go first with Alderman Weigant. Alderman Weigant?
I have, yes, I have concern about the amount of lawn mowers and tires and equipment he has all over the yard, and it's becoming an eyesore, and I do not believe that the neighbors would want to welcome a business like that in their neighborhood, because down the street, we have Weisenbarn, Weisenbarn, and down the other side, we got Jones Boys, and it's really an eyesore for the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, first of all, willing to make a motion to approve it or deny it?
This is Alderman Ferguson, and I would make a motion to...
Go ahead.
This is Alderman Ferguson, and I would make a motion to deny.
Okay, so we...
I respect him, Dennis.
And is that Steele?
Steele.
Okay, so we have a motion of second to deny. Okay.
So, this is Alderman Ovian. I would like to make a motion to approve it. I listened to that whole zoning meeting, and I heard the people who were basically for it. One lady said she didn't go, she didn't have the money to go ahead and buy a new lawnmower, and he went ahead and basically allowed her to use and sometimes even cut her grass. The gentleman is an asset to the neighborhood. Sure, it's, it's an eyesore, but you can, you can curtail that by letting him know what he has to do and where he has to put the lawnmower.
Well...
He's a, he's a part of the neighborhood.
Is anybody else got a comment? Because I would like to add something.
This, this is Weigant. I do, I'm, I'm one of the, I'm one of, go ahead, Dennis, you're first. I'll go after Dennis. There is fifty to a hundred lawnmowers in that backyard. He's got one small shed that he works out of. There's no way that he can put all those lawnmowers in sheds in that one shed.
Okay, Alderman...
The lawnmower's everywhere.
Okay, Alderman Elmore?
Thank you. I spoke with the owner of the property, and Alderman Weigant's comments, I concur with completely. We did not have a lot of neighborhood participation at the zoning meeting, but Robbie Ovian is correct as well. I will say that this gentleman renting this house has been very kind and good to the neighbors. He has been truly, as Alderman Ovian puts it, an asset to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is very pleased with having him. As a neighbor accepts that, they are concerned about, you know, the neighborhood becoming this lawnmower repair, and at times, on Mascula Avenue, people living on both sides, you've got dozens of mowers out in the front yard for sales signs, but the bigger problem may be in the backyard where you'd have even more mowers, oil, gas, tires. There's EPA concerns when you have so many tires out in the backyard that can retain water, that can also draw mosquitoes. You also have the issue, as Alderman Weigant wisely brought up, you have two Belvo businesses that are within a half a mile of this location, so we have to be considerate of the Belvo bricklayer business as well. I concur with Alderman Weigant in his motion. I believe the motion on the floor is to deny.
Okay, we do have a motion to deny. I would just add this. I've, for some odd reason, I got more feedback about this case than I normally ever get about a zoning case, and I would say I have heard what you have mentioned, that the gentleman does help some of the elderly. I also know that the one lawnmower place uptown has referred people to him who, who can't afford newer mowers, and I also was told that the man is looking for a business, a place, but he hasn't found it. I guess this all has happened. I don't know. Can you tell me, Ward seven Alderman, has this basically been the last year during the pandemic that this has gotten, where he's done and has so many parts there? Mowers?
As far as I know, yes, it's been pretty recent in the past, within the past year, and I will say that the landlord does have, I mean, we, the landlord does have other locations that he could go to, according to what he told me. He said that, well, I do have, I said, is there any other place? Because I said, if he is looking for a commercial exposure zoned property, that we would be happy to sit down with them with our Economic Development Department and see if we can help as a city to find him a commercially zoned location.
Well, and that's what...
And he said, no. He said, no. He said, no, I've actually got other places he could go. I said, let's try to see if we can work that out.
Excuse me, can I, can I speak? I'm not an Alderman. I'm just a neighbor.
Go ahead, ma'am. It's, this is, go ahead. I'm gonna allow you.
Thanks. I wasn't sure if I should talk at the beginning or not. I've never been to a city council meeting before. I live directly across the alley from Mr. Ramsey. I am the person that sees his backyard all day, every day, and I was really disappointed that he didn't get the recommendation from the committee. He is just asking for a variance for one year until he can afford to have a place of his own to sell these. He's, he's not asking to open a business here forever. He's just trying to get a leg up to start his business, and I, there are never people, you know, people were concerned about people coming down the alley to purchase things. He's not loud. He doesn't run lawnmowers at nine P M., and I am, I am interested in my Alderman, both of which I have emailed and expressed that the neighbors that are his immediate neighbors don't have a problem with him being there. He's just looking for a little bit of time to stay where he is, to get it done. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. That's what I come to learn this week also. My, my daughter and son-in-law just live two doors away, and they said that they wish he'd tidy up the mess, but they, they said he's very nice. He keeps an eye on the neighborhood when people are at work, and they actually, surprisingly, don't have any problem with him. I, I think what the lady said is what I heard that pirked me up. If we would consider either tabling it and, and working out some more details, or making sure it was only for one year at the maximum, but I do think he's got to clean up and tidy up some of the debris. I think that's a must. But I just tossed that out because I heard from three neighbors myself. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mayor Wiggington?
Yeah.
Alderman Wiggington, couple things. Number one, how long has he been in this business? Number two, is this his livelihood? And number three, I was gonna suggest, after hearing all this, a possible compromise, for the young lady, that he's only, he's looking for a year variance. A compromise could be that we give him a year, but we also work with him to at least try to make the property presentable, so that there's, so there's...
Uh, so that, uh, there's, so there's not simply, I mean, it's, it's the gentleman's livelihood, but I don't wanna put him out of business. And if he is a good neighbor, I want him to still be a good neighbor, but I think we should be looking at a compromise of maybe offering him and make sure he understands, you got a one-year variance, but we're gonna work with you on to try to help you to rearrange, reorganize, and make your, your property presentable so that you're even a better get, uh, uh, a better, uh, neighbor. I would like to see a compromise.
Could, could we, could I ask if anyone's willing to table this for thirty days? That maybe the two Aldermen and myself could go talk to the gentleman and come back with some more specific guidelines? And, and try not to knock his legs out from under him, but try to help him, uh, so that he could make the next step in his business career?
I think that's a good idea.
Duco?
I favor that.
Okay, hold it, hold, hold, hold it.
It's a seventh ward Alderman, just-
Yeah, so we need, we- Would you guys, would, would you be willing to amend your motion, uh, Alderman Ferguson and, 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 uh, Alderman Steele?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the amendment would be that we would table this for, for thirty days and give the Ward seven Aldermen and myself a chance to meet with Mr. Ramsey and see, and, and we'll take somebody from housing with us so we have the exact codes, what things need to be addressed immediately, and, and let's see if we can't maybe put our heads together and help him. It's been a very unique year, and when you think about some of the other businesses we've tried to help, this might be a way that we could truly help this man get on his feet. Cause it doesn't sound like the neighbors are by any means, uh, on this call tonight or were at their meeting, uh, the other night, that are jumping up and down in frustration. Sounds like, if anything, they, they kinda like the gentleman, uh, the way he's been helping. So if we have this motion that's amended to table for thirty days and trying to work this out, if there's any fur- are there any further questions for right now?
Mayor, mayor, I was just gonna say, Alderman Wiggington, uh, the gentleman sounds like he's industrious. He's trying to, uh, build a, a small business, trying to keep that a living. He's a good neighbor, I don't know, those are three choices in my mind.
I, I, I would agree, and that's what I've learned this week, and that's why I was, wasn't sure which way I was gonna go. And I normally don't inject this much into, uh, a zoning case, but I think it'd be the right thing to do to try to work with him. So we have a amendment to, uh, table this for thirty days and, and for the Alderman and myself to visit with this gentleman. If there's no further questions, I call for a roll call vote.
Hey, ma- mayor, this is Wygant.
Yeah, yeah, Denny.
Okay, well, I got, well, I'm glad to hear from this lady, but I heard from another lady, she didn't like it. What I, what I'm gonna do too is I'm gonna go to the neighborhoods, we'll table this. I'll go to the neighborhoods and I'll take a survey of the neighbors and see how they all feel. But I, 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 I think you should clean the, you know, we'll go off to him to clean that yard up a little bit.
Well, I, I think we can, I think we can work on that, Denny, I really do.
It's wall-to-wall wood lawnmowers, there ain't one inch of grass, I mean, it's, it's, there must be seventy-five to a hundred lawnmowers, if you know.
I think we can, I think we can work on that, I really do.
Okay, that's on three states.
Okay, listen, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table for thirty days. As we, if we can't work it out, then we'll come back and we'll make a vote. So, uh, a roll call vote.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion tabled. Uh, Alderman Wiggington, we have a couple from, uh, Ardenance and Legal Review, you're on the, you got the floor.
We share the eleven C one on behalf of Ordinance and Legal. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments to chapter ninety-three, nuisances, section ninety-three point zero zero three. Notice to obey of the revised code of ordinances, so moved.
This is what I hear, right? We have a motion by Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Hazel, Hazel.
Who, who's that? Who was that?
Hazel.
Hazel, got it, got it, got it. Okay, so thi- this motion is, was kinda my pet peeve. Um, we, we, we have, uh, we have a few apartment complexes that, uh, our housing officers, our Lieutenant Colonel Ice Can't get calls from the public or from me, uh, regularly. And we're constantly giving them a five-day constant abatement, once a week in some cases, to clean up the area around their dumpsters that are just a, a mess. And so this would stop it, we'd, we'd give them a letter, they'd be warned and they'd be told in the future, we're not gonna keep chasing them down for five days and, and, and be the one who's notifying them. They have to start to take some ownership that these dumpsters and some of these trash areas are becoming, uh, pigpens. And they need to be, they need to do better. So that's what this is about, it's kinda like the grass cutting. We give them a letter the first time, and after that, they have to do their, they have to do their work. So, we have a motion and we have a second, are there any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is all-
Yes.
I've got a situation, can you know where it's at? It's, it's right on West Main Street. I've asked this man incessantly to go ahead and clean up his grease pit, uh, dump, and also his, his, uh, his dumpster. I'd like to see him put, and, and, for him to enclose it.
Well, we have an-
But he doesn't care any-
We already have an ordinance after so many notifications, they have to enclose, right, Jenny? So, okay, let's do this. Uh, act on this here tonight, and then we're going to, we're gonna deal with a few of these because they can already, per our ordinance, be told to enclose after a couple warnings, I believe. So, um, uh, right now, this will-
Mayor, it's three.
Yes?
It, 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 this is an if, after three notices, um, regarding the dumpster, they, um, that's when we can force them to enclose.
Well, then maybe we need to start to be a little bit more, uh, encouraging to do that. That's because it's, some of them are just taking advantage of us. It's the same, I think, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Ice Can't would agree with me. It's the same six or eight every week or two. Okay, we have a-
Yeah, it definitely is.
We have a motion and we have a second, roll call.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony? Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, we go to eleven C two, Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of Ordinance and Legal Review, I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments to chapters one fifty Building Code, Building Regulations, Session one five zero point zero one, adoption of the Building Code of the Revised Code of Ordinances, so moved.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, um, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Steele?
Wygant?
Steele, okay, Alderman Wiggington made the motion, Steele second. This here just refreshes, uh, is to, uh, um, actually clear up some what we thought was on the books. Uh, to let the county, if they have, for example, they came to us recently and wanted to know what our codes, their codes and our codes are pretty similar in most things, but we had a slight difference. And, uh, the city attorney and I talked about this, and we just feel like if it's a county project, they should follow their codes and talk to their state's attorney for their advice. And, uh, it's the same thing with schools, the schools are under the supervision of the state. So, uh, isn't that correct, Jenny?
Correct, yes.
So, uh, that's just kinda cleaning this up a little bit, is all this is doing. So we have a motion and we have a second, do we have any other questions about this, about this adjustment to this ordinance?
Mayor, mayor, this, this really makes sense.
I think it does, I think it does, we don't need to get involved in, in their business, we don't have time for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall? Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington, we're back to Streets and Grades, so you would have these next two motions, eleven D one and eleven D two. Okay?
And I'm gonna read them separately because eleven D one involves a lot of money. On behalf of Streets and Grades, I'd like to make a motion, uh, toll bid of eight hundred ninety-eight thousand twenty dollars seventy-eight cents by Chris Brothers Asphalt, from the instruction of West Bay Street, Seventeen Street, Twenty-Eighth Street, so moved.
That motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Wygant?
Duco?
Duco, it's her ward part of that. Uh, we have a motion and we have a second. Let me ask a question before we, uh, open it up here. Uh, Michael Veloff, this does include, uh, handicap ramps at the intersections, right?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, okay, very good, so I want everybody to understand that. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any further questions on eleven D one? Hearing no further questions about this project, I call for a roll call vote.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington.
All right, eleven D two, on behalf of Streets and Grades, I'd like to make, make a motion authorizing the sale conversion of scrapping of a two thousand and four Dodge Dakota, bid number one D seven H G, three two K, nine four S seven, four six, four seven six, from the Streets Department, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Rothweiler?
Duco?
Rothweiler, uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, any questions about scrapping this vehicle, it's time to go. Okay, roll call.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries, we go to eleven E. There's a request from administration to approve an amended development agreement with Pinnacle Eatery's LLC for the remodeling of the existing facility at six forty-eight Carlisle Avenue. This is the A N W, it's an extension of time, if you read that in your packet. Do I hear a motion?
Elmore?
Elmore, do I hear a second?
Wygant?
Wygant made the second. We have a motion and a second to extend this, as spelled out in your packet, for this, uh, future A N W. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Alderman Consilla, you have eleven F from Economic Development.
On behalf of Economic Development, I make a motion to approve an amended development agreement with Baum &amp; Shell Incorporated.
We have a motion from Consilla, do I hear a second?
Gentleman?
Gentleman, we have a motion and a second. The terms, most of you were at, I believe, finance meeting, and I don't know, I think this might have been at Economic Development too. So it's gone to two full committees. Is there any further questions or comments about this before I call for a vote? Roll call.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Motion carries, we go to Communications, we have two of them, I'll ask the clerk to read them.
Can't we do them together?
Please.
Please.
Twelve A, Keith Bellbell Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup, five one, twenty twenty-one, request from Basic Youth Board to hold the Keith Bellbell Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup Saturday, May first, twenty twenty-one, nine A M. to twelve P M. As a volunteer extension of Bellbell Helping Bellbell Day. Twelve B, Van Man Discs at Bicentennial, four three, twenty twenty-one. Request from Van Man Discs to host the National Amateur Disc Golf Series at Bicentennial Park, Saturday, April third, twenty twenty-one, seven A M. to eight P M., no city services requested.
Do I hear a motion to approve these communications?
Ferguson.
Pusa? Duco?
Ferguson and Pusa, were the first two. Um, any discussion, questions? Hearing none about the approval of these two communications, roll call.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Those two communications are approved. We have no petitions this evening. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-four oh five, resolution thirty-four oh six, and resolution thirty-four oh seven. Do I hear a motion, and by title only? And as a group if there's no... Duco, and who'd I hear a second?
Shaffer.
Ferguson.
Shaffer, and that's, is that okay to read those three as a group?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so these, this motion was to read those three resolutions by title only and as a group. I call for a roll call vote.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion's carried. We go to ordinance... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That motion carried to, uh, read by title only.
Resolution thirty-four oh five, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Bellville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-twenty and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-one line item budget. Resolution thirty-four oh six, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Bellville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-twenty and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-one supplemental budget. Resolution thirty-four oh seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an Illinois Department of Transportation I dot local agency agreement for the construction of North Virginia Avenue.
Do I hear motion to approve thirty-four oh five, thirty-four oh six, and thirty-four oh seven, these three resolutions?
Ferguson.
Steele and Ferguson second. We have a motion and a second to approve these three resolutions as did they were just read. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Resolutions pass. This time I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, the ordinances, and is there any problem, uh, if we read them together as a group?
Yes, Mayor, I'll have to abstain on fifteen A, Randall.
Okay, well, let's do this on fifteen A. Let's do fifteen A first and then we could read the rest as a group, okay? So I'm looking for a motion to read by title, ordinance number eighty-nine fourteen. Do I hear that motion?
Shaffer.
Diddleman. Shaffer and Diddleman. Shaffer made the motion, Diddleman second, to read ordinance eighty-nine fourteen by title only. If there's no questions, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Abstain.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-nine fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable tax increment in sales tax refunding revenue bond series twenty-twenty-one A, Carlisle Green Mount redevelopment project, a tax increment in sales tax refunding revenue bonds, series twenty-twenty-one B, Carlisle Green Mount redevelopment project of the city of Bellville, Illinois, and approving certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance eighty-nine fourteen?
Pousa?
Pousa, do I hear a second?
Shaffer.
Sha- Shaffer?
Shaffer.
Pousa made the motion, Shaffer, Shaffer made the second. If there's no further questions about ordinance eighty-nine fourteen, I'd ask for a roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Abstain.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman? Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, if there's no problem, can we read the rest of the ordinances as a group by title only, first of all?
Yeah.
I would like a motion to read ordinance eighty-five fif- eighty-nine fifteen, eighty-nine sixteen, eighty-nine seventeen, eighty-nine eighteen, eighty-nine nineteen, eighty-nine twenty, eighty-nine twenty-one, eighty-nine twenty-two, eighty-nine twenty-three, and eighty-nine twenty-four, and lastly, eighty-nine twenty-five, by title only and as a group. Do I hear that motion?
Ferguson.
Ferguson and Duco. Any questions on what I just read? Roll call.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Okay, you got a long one to read here.
Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-nine fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or drilling of potable water supply wells or by any other method. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-nine sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance zero-seven, February twenty-one, Benny H. Par Jr. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty-nine seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance zero-eight, February twenty-one, Linda Weisenstein. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-nine eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance zero-nine, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw. Fifteen F, ordinance eighty-nine nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance ten, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw. Fifteen G, ordinance eighty-nine twenty, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance eleven, February twenty-one, Brandon McGraw. Fifteen H, ordinance eighty-nine twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance thirteen, February twenty-one, city of Bellville zoning code amendment. Fifteen I, ordinance eighty-nine twenty tw- eighty-nine twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, a zoning ordinance fourteen, February twenty-one, Taylor Bellville CDJR Incorporated. Fifteen J, ordinance eighty-nine twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-three nuisances of the revised code of ordinances of Bellville, Illinois. Fifteen K, ordinance eighty-nine twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending te- title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty, building code, building regulations, section one fifty point zero-one, adoption of building code of the revised code of ordinances of the city of Bellville as amended. Fifteen L, ordinance eighty-nine twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing, authorizing sale and conversion of personal property, two thousand and four Dodge Dakota Street Department.
Do I hear motion to approve the, uh, the approval of those ordinances as just read?
Elmore?
Elmore.
Duco?
Duco. Motion to second to approve that long list of ar- ar- ordinances. Any questions? Roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Those motions passed. Unfinished business? Miss silly?
Yes, I have the mayor, if that's okay?
Yep.
Unfinished business? Thank you. I think it was close to three years ago, we told the bars and restaurants that we would try to level the playing field as we put it on our license fee structure. While their fees were being increased, most businesses paid zero on license fees. I've asked previously where we are on this promise that we made to the bars and restaurants, and basically, we haven't scratched the surface, as far as I know, it hasn't even brought up in committee. In the meantime, we continually to do our due diligence on cutting budgets, hiring freezes, and trying to fix a much-needed, uh, equipment shortage like trash trucks. We know we're understaffed in almost every department, and some departments are under-equipped. Revenue is clearly needed, and I'm talking about more revenue than what comes from Shop Bellville First, which is a great philosophy. Now, for the last two years, we've kicked around the storage pass-through sales tax on storage lockers. You get another revenue stream that does not affect the citizens of Bellville. It's a revenue stream that we would also control ourselves, and we would benefit from. So, that's two revenue streams I've asked about and/or proposed, and it looks to me like I'm oh-for-two. So my question isn't to the mayor or Jamie, who have done their job keeping our budget in line and cutting where it needs to be cut, where it, and it can't be cut anymore, uh, where, as the mayor says, we're as lean as lean can be. Uh, my question is to the other fifteen aldermen, when we sit in these committee meetings, we've brought up two things. Please tell me what your ideas are for generating revenue stream to help our budget. Hopefully, your idea can be internally controlled, and funds can come directly to our finance director. So, I, I, I don't have, I have other ideas, but I, I keep striking out, and I'm just wondering, what am I missing? So Alderman, do you have any, any, do any of the other fifteen aldermen have any other idea on the revenue stream? And you don't even have to say what it is, I'd just like to know, is there something else that you have in mind to increase our revenue? Because we need...
Alderman Delmore? Alderman Delmore? Alderman Wiggington?
Go ahead, Alderman Wiggington.
Phil is Roger.
I'm done. I'm done.
You know, uh, Phil, actually, I don't think you struck out on either one of them. Uh, both of them, it was hard to wrap our arms around it, hard to figure out how we were gonna do this. Uh, and, and, I mean, you're totally right. Uh, after this pandemic, every city in the country needs revenue stream. Uh, I, I just think any additional fees or taxation, uh, at this time, um, certainly a burden on everybody. I think the revenue stream has got to come from bringing business and industry, uh, where we can take advantage of the tax, uh, revenues. That's where it's gotta be a growth. Uh, you know, uh, we, we keep pinpointing little niches, like, like the storage units and, and the, and the, uh, the, the restaurants and bars and so forth, which, uh, you know, it really gets, it's, that's not gonna really help our budget that much. Uh, we need a big hit. We need to either panic, uh, we need to operate incentives for businesses, uh, and you know what? And really, when you think about it, our downtown feels pretty tough times. Actually, they survived. Uh, we didn't lose any restaurants, but we just need from...
Sure we did, sure we did, yeah, absolutely.
From one fifty-seven East, we need to really look at how to draw more business and industry, uh, on Route fifteen, which is wide open. That's where our revenues are gonna come from. We need not small hits, but we need big hits.
I couldn't agree more. And I, and I said, when I brought up the storage tax, this is not the answer, the ideal answer. This is just one very small piece. But, I mean, I, I, I'm not hearing anything else. And by the way, we did lose businesses during last year. We've lost Shotzies in my ward. We lost, at least for the time being, Wine Tap Downtown. So we did lose businesses. And, and while the COVID is, was an unprecedented issue and a problem that we've had to deal with, and every community in the world, I guess you could say, has had to deal with it. It doesn't stop from needing, uh, equipment for our Streets Department. It doesn't stop our Sanitation Department from having needs. And we've done everything we can. And we were doing things, we've been cutting staff for, kind of, like, for years. So, I mean, this wasn't something that just came on with COVID. And I'm just saying, if, if we don't generate some new revenue, and Shop Bellville's great. I, I wholeheartedly am a firm believer in it. I'm so proud of our city council and our administration for pushing Shop Bellville. But, we may have to do more. And we may have to create some revenue stream, because Jamie can't sit there, I'm assuming, I've had short conversations with her, sit there and keep telling these department heads, no, I can't let you, let you do that, I can't let you hire this person. Is, is anybody think that our Streets Department and our Sanitation Department is staffed enough? I mean, they are razor thin. And at any given time, as they've had to show us in the past, one truck goes down, we're in a world of hurt. So...
You know, you have to, you have to grow, you have to, you have to grow revenues through growth. And you know what? We're kinda like, the Bellville's kinda like the hidden gem on this side of the river. Everybody talks about Fairview because of the mall, and Shiloh because of all their new stores, and, uh, and, and Edwardsville because they've got university, uh, and, and, but nobody set it downtown like we do. Uh, we need to, we need to reach out, and we need, um, a marketing and an economic development department that can really start promoting Route fifteen. Uh, and, and, about the two businesses you lost, uh, you know, I wasn't aware of that, um, and, and, I hate to hear that, but I think sometimes businesses are also underverged of going out of business, and the pandemic pushed them over the edge. But we need to be reaching out and, and kind of tuning our own horn, kinda like in the fourth quarter, when we would be on Cam Walk's radio, we would tune our own harder, our own horn, come to Bellville, see what we've got. And we need to do that twelve months out of the year, not just in the fourth quarter. We need to be out, we need to be the leaders, we need to be out in front, we need to be marketing, we need an economic development committee to get us out, well, I'm gonna use a cliche, be in the bushes, but, um, you know what? With incentives and with a, a, a concerted effort, uh, some of these businesses we might be losing to somebody else, we should be able to get our fair share of it, because we are the cally seat.
Okay, let me just say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna...
I'll wrap it up.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, last, last comment, I'm done. But I will just say that if, if, if we're not gonna do these things, if we're not gonna do the business license fee structure that we talked about three years ago, if we're not gonna talk about the storage pass-through tax, which is a sales tax, it's simple, it's a simple sales tax, pass-through, doesn't cost the business owner anything, it doesn't cost the resident of Bellville anything, and if we're not gonna do these types of things, because it's gonna take several of them to answer our problems, and I hate to bring it up, I'm sorry, Mayor, but we do not wanna be faced with another wheel sticker. Let's not go down that road. Folks, you better put your thinking caps on. That's my point. I'm done.
Okay, let me just, let me go back and say this. We haven't given up on looking and studying the business licenses, but keep in mind, in the last eighteen months, we, uh, we had the Housing Department change people, we've had a Building Commissioner change, we've had a City Engineer change, and we've had a lot of changes, uh, in the, like, we, our, uh, our land use planner changed. So, every time we just about got ready to convene a meeting to talk about things like this, we were going through another change, and everybody was picking up the slack of one more duties, sets of duties, so we could keep going. Because you're a hundred percent right, Mr. Elmore, we are lean, and when I see, when I see things recently and hear things that we need to... And when I see, when I see things recently and hear things that we need to be able to cut and trim the budget, I don't think people have any idea. I know Jamie and I looked at each other today. Uh, the budget is pretty doggone lean, and, um, some of your departments wouldn't exist if we took anything else away from them. So we will look at the business licenses. Uh, I didn't think it was a good time, but I didn't really get in the middle of the, uh, the sales tax storage unit right now, because I just think it's a tough year to add anything. But we are gonna study, and I can't give you an exact date, but, but it's been a, a couple, almost two years of constant change in some of the department heads' positions. And, and, and that's because we're so lean, and because we've eliminated some of the, the backup jobs, we, we really have had to pitch in. I got Jenny here as a city clerk pitching in how many times, uh, picking up slack because we've been waiting for a new person to be hired. So we'll get there, and I, it's, it's some very fair comments. We do need to put our thinking caps on, and I, I agree with that, but we also gotta stay, um, we gotta stay, uh, um, competitive with everybody else too, so we'll get there. At this time, we have miscellaneous and new business, and I'd ask if someone's willing to.
Mayor, I want, this is Alderman Ovian, I've got something I wanna bring up on new business.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, uh, back on September the sixteenth at housing meeting, I indicated to Director McCaskill that I had ten properties that had immediate needs over and above the, uh, pilot program. And she said to go ahead and send it to her, which on September the nineteenth, I did. Well, I'm not hearing from anybody, I sent it to Director McCaskill, to, uh, Ward Four Alderman, to Lieutenant Colonel Matt Icecamp, and to you, Mitch. On the round, February the fifteenth, I went ahead and called Aaron, and, and please look at, uh, the email which I sent, uh, the mayor. And make sure he's aware of this, because I said, something needs to be done, I've sent you a picture of him, and I've sent you the address below the picture, to show you that it does have problems. I'm just gonna go through, and because it's important, and it'll spell out what we're doing right now. So the other aldermen can take advantage of this as well. The very first property was at seventy-three North Ninety-Eight Streets. Owner had paint falling all off the building. He has been given an extension by Building Commissioner Tonavol to three twenty-three, so he can get back here from Florida in order to make the immediate repairs. At seventy-one hundred West A Street, we asked the, the owner of the property to clean up the debris, and also to go ahead and fix the hole in front of the fascia board, which goes into the home, where squirrels have been getting into. They picked up the debris, but didn't do anything with the fascia boards, so it is, there's been no change as far as we're concerned. If you don't follow the guidelines requested. At sixty-five, sixty-nine oh five West Main Street, no change, nothing done. One forty-two North Seventy-Eight Street, no change. Ninety-eight oh five West Main Street, only debris, therefore, no change, because other repairs were requested. One forty-two North Seventy-Eight Street, no ch-. Now, seventy-three eleventh Main Street, I had indicated was vacant. I thought it was, but it wasn't. There's a gentleman who's a hermit, works as a, a mechanic over in St. Louis, works crazy hours. But now we know that it is, however, the home needs immediate attention. On, you can look at it from the outside, the inside does. And then one thirty-two North Eighty-Second Street, we were on this for a long time. It was sold to a veteran who's presently working on the property. But the good news is, ninety-six North Ninety-Eight Street was condemned. And ninety-eight thirteen West Main Street has also been condemned. I wanna commend both Lieutenant Colonel Matt Icecamp, and especially Stephen Tonavol, who's put in a very strong performance here. They have given these individuals fifteen days to complete the repairs. If not, they're gonna go through the finding process. I wanna thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Is there anybody else, because I'm gonna go to ask for a motion for motor fuel claims in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson.
Ferguson, do I hear a second?
Pusa.
Pusa. Do I hear the discussion on the motor fuel claims? No discussion, roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're not gonna need to go to executive session tonight. You should have gotten an email from the city attorney. I ask that you read it, and if you have any questions for him, don't communicate with the whole group, because we'll be in violation of open meetings. So just if you have a question for the city attorney or for myself, you can contact us. If not, we'll probably have an executive session, uh, at the next meeting. Is there a motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
Ferguson.
Steele?
Ferguson and Steele. Any questions about adjournment, roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.